4:302 PM. Item two invocation will be given to us by Councilmember Vasquez. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by voluntary standing up.
Thank you, Mayor Hoven. Please join me in a few moments of prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask that you enter our minds and our hearts today to help us better understand what it means to love and what it means to obey you and your spiritual commandments. We ask that you help us let go of what's in the past. We ask that you help us be grateful for today's blessings. And finally, Father, we ask that you help us look forward to a brighter future filled with eternal hope. All these things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Chief Bridger, can you hear us from the back? We're going to move on to item three, Discover Odessa Quarterly Report. Ms. Marts?
Hello, everyone. Wonderful to see you today. Thanks for taking a few minutes of your time for me. I know you have a lot on the schedule, so we're just going to jump right in. And of course, you see the teams here today. We love coming to support you guys. We appreciate you all. There we go. We're going to start with page one for the Discover Odessa Quarterly Report for July through September of this year. The second page leads right into what you're used to seeing, our total economic impact for all of the events, the total groups assisted, total attendees, and total hotel nights. You'll see at the top right corner, we did add some information that you might not be aware of. We have fifty-four hotel properties and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four rooms in market. And then on this page, the attendees, the hotel nights, and the economic impact are broke down by type of event. And those are meetings, our special events, and our sports, which we'll talk about on a few pages in. Let's see. The next page we have here is our visitor snapshot. This one is a little bit new to you all. And we work with a data platform called Sartaco, and they have a lot of really neat information that we are learning to dive into to learn a little bit more about our visitor. I'll share there on the top right, the visitor percent of total, that thirty-four point nine percent. The description below says, "On a daily basis, this is the share of observed devices in your market that are classified as a visitor." Remember, for this purpose, anything within fifty miles outside of the city limit radius, that is what's considered a visitor. And so in this time period, we had thirty-five percent of the people within our city limits were considered a visitor. It also shows out-of-state visitors, our hotel occupancy, and of course, some average spending details. I do like to highlight that down there at the bottom left, the top visitor, we get the most visitors from Dallas-Fort Worth. But if you see the visitors from Lubbock spend the most. And those are just some really interesting numbers as we continue to develop a plan within our department about what visitors we want to target. Some really neat information. The next page highlights the groups that we assisted within this quarter. It's broke down again by sport, meeting, and events. You've got some color coordination there. You saw on the graphs previously that sports really reigned this quarter, which happens a lot. And we had the West Texas All-Star Tournament, which we've shared with you guys before, multiple boxing events and golf tournaments, as well as in September, the Bands of America event that had previously been held in Midland. We're very glad to host them here this year, and that was fifteen schools over a matter of a weekend. Really neat event. Then if you move on to the next page, we have our upcoming groups and events. You'll see that we are quickly moving into this new fiscal year with events that will round out twenty-four into twenty-five. I do want to highlight February twenty-twenty-five, that top event there. It's a very long name, Texas Association of Administrators and Supervisors of Programs of Young Children. This is an event that our sales, our meetings, no, our group sales specialists, I'll get the word out. She's been working with a contact at ECIST, and this will be the first time that event's been here. We're very proud of that. We have events into twenty-six and as well into twenty-seven. The next page highlights some of our digital marketing. Was there a question? Oh, great. Good. I'm glad you liked the images. They're fine. We're really working on really good current images of our city. So we're on the digital marketing page, and there's a lot of great information here as well. You know, I'll just highlight that our social media is growing, our subscribers to our newsletters growing. It's where we get good current information about things that are happening in our city. I do want to highlight on the right side of the page, that top box there, kind of in the middle, you see that thirty-one seconds. That was a question that was posed last quarter by our mayor about how long the people that are visiting our website are staying on our page. So our average is about thirty-one seconds, and the national average is fifty-four seconds. So we're a little under the national average, but we are not disappointed by that amount of time, and we look forward to growing that. Information you don't have right there that I did see on a different report was that sixty percent of our website visits are coming from desktops, with a smaller amount coming from your mobile phones and then a real small amount on tablets. So that's interesting, too. If you look at our top users by age at the bottom there, our top user age bracket is twenty-five to thirty-four. So this is all information we can continue to use as we're marketing to visitors in our area who's seeing our page already, who do we want to come, and who do we want to get in front of. The next page has some of our advertising assets that happened this quarter. As you'll see, you each have a Travel Host magazine in front of you, and we are on the back cover of that Travel Host magazine. Love that image. It's one that is received very well within our city. Then on this page, it highlights some digital advertisements as well as other print ads. The team highlights page has a lot. The short answer here is that we are busy. We continue to communicate with meeting planners as well as venues, attractions, and hotels to better serve our groups as they come. In August and September, we met with multiple venue leaders, and we met with a contact out at Synergy, which was a contact we didn't have before, which we're very glad to have. We helped manage and host, let's see, the exhibition game between Alabama and Permian. And our support sales specialist was able to connect them out there at Synergy, and they watched Friday Night Lights on the big screen, and they had a meal there, and they got to play some games.
People from Alabama?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we got to see the buses roll up, and we got to welcome them, the football players and the band as well. And then the last page here shows our sports event recruitment program, which we were able to give all of our money out this year. We're very glad for that, and we are quickly working on the funds for the fiscal year we're in now.
What's the MAGA show? West Texas MAGA show? Is that what it is?
The West Texas, is it the boxing? A boxing event? Yeah. Out at... Okay. And that's all I have for you guys right now. Do you have any other thoughts or questions? Yes, sir.
Laura, have you gotten any feedback on the success of the Special Olympics?
You know, just the initial, the coordinators being very grateful for the support. The day of, I kept hearing that we have lots of volunteers, lots of people in our city willing and excited to have this event, and he kept saying, "I forgot what it's like to have a city happy to have us here." So we've got that. We're working on some, the hotel nights, we're working closely with Visit Midland as well to see how many hotel nights we had in each city. And they are scheduling like a post-event after-action discussion about that event that we'll be a part of.
So you'll be able to give us some kind of a reporting in the future about the feedback and...
Absolutely. Overall, yes, visitors and impact as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else I can do for you guys? Guys and gals? Thank y'all so much. We like what we do, so. All right. We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to item four, presentation discussion of the Forward Fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Mr. Walker, how you doing, sir? It's been a while.
Mayor, good. Thank you. It has been a while.
Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Councilmembers, I am delighted to be here. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you about an exciting document that our board authorized us to go public with on September the thirtieth, and this is our Long Range Transportation Plan. I did prepare a PowerPoint, and we can go... Okay, we can do that, or I can just give you the highlights of it, whatever your preference would be, Mayor.
Just go ahead and go with the presentation since you're...
Okay. All right. All right. Got it. Okay, thank you. This is the cover. But I do want to tell you quickly about who we are before I dive straight into this. We're a federally mandated agency. Any community in the country that has fifty thousand or more population has to have an MPO under federal laws. So if you go to Des Moines, Iowa, you're going to find one. You're here, Big Spring, no. Lamisa, no. We're the only MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, in the entire twelve-county Tex-odessa district. And of course, you may already know, but we're made up of City of Odessa, Ector County, a majority of the land area of Ector County, a majority of Midland County, as well as the city, and there's a sliver in Martin County on the north side of Midland in our jurisdiction as well. So there are five elected members that serve on our board, and there are two appointed members. One of them is the Tex-odessa District Engineer, Eric Lichens. Many of you know him. And the other is the General Manager for EZ Rider. So those seven members are the MPO and make the decisions that I'm about to tell you about. Under the law, we must have a new transportation plan every five years. We are scheduled to have ours finished at next month's meeting on November the eighteenth. And as I said, on September the thirtieth, the board allowed us to put the draft document out for public consumption and review. So I'll go to, what is a Metropolitan Transportation Plan? Well, it's a document, and in its purity, that's what it is. It's a document that lays out the projected future for all modes of transportation inside a given geographic area, and I've already described the area to you. So we don't only deal with roads, even though, I'm going to tell you in a few minutes, that's where the bulk of the money goes to. But we also deal with multimodal transit, working with EZ Rider, and you all know and familiar with the Wildcaters Trail, and you all have plans of your own that don't necessarily directly involve us pertaining to sidewalk provision, trail systems that you may have. So the region has got a lot going on, but we're the agency that is tasked to coordinate with the federal and state money. I'll show you, we must meet the federal requirements, and every time there's a new transportation bill, perhaps you know of the one that was passed in November of twenty-twenty-one, where there was a lot of money that came with it, but there were a lot of new requirements, too, that were put on all agencies such as ours and the Tex-odessa District. We reflect stakeholder opinions. We work with some people that are in this room and directly with Councilmember Thompson, who has the seat representing Odessa on our board. So we have workshops, just like you're doing, and we talk about transportation needs and what should be on the horizon. As I said, this is a new plan covering a different twenty-five-year period going to twenty-fifty. The plan we currently have goes through twenty-forty-five. For the most part, we're leaving the projects that are in there intact, and we're adding new ones anytime in that twenty-five-year window, but probably toward the end, not exactly twenty-fifty, but toward the latter years of that five-year window. And I'll allude to something and then come back to the PowerPoint. You know, I-14 is coming into Odessa from both the south side, coming up from the Crane County line, and also along I-20 where it is co-labeled with I-27. So those two roads, we can put them in the plan, and that's what we're proposing, but construction's not going to start on those anytime soon because of what's required behind all the planning, all the documentation, all the right-of-way acquisition, all the NEPA, the environmental needs that are associated with, and reports that Tex-odessa does. We don't do those. Tex-odessa takes care of those. So you're going to see those roads, but to say you're going to see them in the next five to ten years is probably inaccurate. It's certainly going to be beyond ten, and I'll tell you why in a minute. So we are streamlining our document, and I'm going to not focus too much on the document. The document we currently have is about a five-inch binder. We're knocking this down to almost a two-inch binder. We've got seven chapters instead of eleven. It's a good way to, it's a better way to do business. Volume doesn't always tell the whole story, so we're reducing what we currently have. It's about the people and the places and the mobility that's occurring around here. We have a strong public participation process. We hope some of you have submitted your comments, and you have the ability now to, under our public comment period, to submit anything through the ninth of November, at which time our comment period will close. But we do encourage you to do that, either through our Permian Basin MPO website, dot com, or you can do it through our consultant's webpage covering the long-range plan. I wanted to show you one thing on here, on the screen, on the monitor. You can see the spikes on the left-hand side of the page. Those are days in which we have received a lot of feedback, and you see one day is about four hundred and ninety-three comments, the next highest one is four oh two, and then you drop a little bit over time. But we are delighted to see people responding to what we're proposing, or even a comment that may not even tie into what our draft plan is, but something about safety, something about bridges, something about traffic signals. The comments are widespread, but for the most part, everyone wants to see improvements in this region, and that's a good thing. The first thing that came to the top of the list when you analyze all the comments is people want to be focused on safety and congestion. Those are their two main big ones. That shouldn't be a surprise to you or anyone. The next is people would like to take transit and ride a bike more often. And so with the Wildcaters Trail and tasks that you may be undertaking, people are going to have a safer way to get around, even the provision of sidewalks. And then the last one is today's problem areas are not limited to a few locations. And you'll see on the screen, a lot more red dots on the Ector County slash Odessa side of the county line than on the eastern side, the Midland side. A lot more dots on the, particularly on the Loop Three Thirty-eight corridor. You'll see that on the map. I want to tell you about some of the major improvements that the board has stated in the document. We know that Tex-odessa is spending approximately one point four billion on I-20. Some of that's already on the ground and drivable by you and I. But the western portion of it is going to be let, let for construction, i.e. there'll be a contract between JBS Parkway and Going West out to nineteen thirty-six. I'm not, we don't control when that contract gets let for construction, but I do know it's right up there at the top of Tex-odessa's list, continue with the I-20 construction. So again, that piece is a component of about one point four billion worth of improvements. It takes four lane, turns it into six, takes the two-way frontage roads, turns them into one directional, and takes the overpasses going over I-20 completely out of the picture. I-20's going over those. So you can't hit a column underneath a bridge now and slow down I-20 for who knows how long because you didn't check the load before you took off on your trip. So these were problems, the crashes at bridge locations going over I-20 have been real problems. So Tex-odessa's taking care of those. I mentioned the two new interstates, fourteen coming in from the south and from the east, and then twenty-seven going in on the eastern side of our boundary. One of the larger pieces, larger efforts that has shown up in the plan is to convert major portions of Three Thirty-eight into freeway sections. There's already been efforts underway to do this, and you've seen the fruits of some of it. If I take you to the US Three Eighty-five North, right where the Loop hits it, that's about four or five years ago, that opened with an interchange. And then if you work your way down East Three Thirty-eight, we did some, working with Tex-odessa and the board, we did some temporary work that'll eventually become an interchange at Fifty-second and Fifty-six. And you know now that Yukon and Three Thirty-eight is open for consumer and freight traffic. So eventually, that corridor, the eastern side, and pieces of the western side are going to be built into freeway sections with full frontage roads, business opportunities along the frontage roads, whatever the city's master plan would hold as far as that is. But we have implemented, we've shown in our plan the desire to bring Three Thirty-eight up to freeway status. And some major money showed up in the last Tex-odessa Tenure Plan for a new interchange at Eighty-seventh and Three Thirty-eight, and that was thirty-five million scheduled for that single location. Moving on, I'd like to tell you also that in working with Ector County Representatives, Eight Sixty-six on the western end of our boundary is proposed to be improved from its current condition to four-lane divided highway.
Excuse me? What was that again?
FM Eight Sixty-six would go to a four-lane divided facility and not what it currently is, the two-lane. Another major piece that we're all proud of is that we have put in the plan two new what are called direct connects, or you may think of them as flyovers, whatever your terminology is for that. You go to Austin, you go to Dallas, you'll think of yourself, say, going to Fort Worth, and you hit Eight Twenty, and you have a choice to go north or south on that road. You just get up in the air on that facility, and you come back down onto the road itself, the Eight Twenty. Yeah, you lose a little bit of speed because you're not going straight. You're making a turn, but forty-five, fifty mile an hour turns, direct connect, your speed, your movement is continuous the whole time. We are proposing two of those here, one of them at East Loop Three Thirty-eight and One Ninety-One, and the other one on the Midland side at One Ninety-One and Loop Two Fifty. So a lot of commuter traffic between the two communities. You see it a lot, and there isn't really, comparatively, there isn't a lot of freight traffic on One Ninety-One, but there's a lot of commuter traffic. So we're going to encourage the movement of people to and from their job opportunities and wherever they're going to in the region with those two projects, too. So I'll move on to the next slide. This is a map that, I'm assuming this is on your computer screen as well. So you can see on the left side, it's I-27 coming in, and it isn't shown in an orange color. And then on the right side, it's I-14 in a bluish color coming in from Crane County. Major money, approximately three hundred and twenty million for each of those two, I mean, not for both, three twenty each. And then we address the multimodal framework, and we talk about what's going to be spent, or programmed, rather, on the transit system. Transit system has projected a hundred and seventy-five million needed over the twenty-five-year period. The highway system is vastly, significantly more, and it is at three and a half billion over the twenty-five-year period. I did request a section in the document from our consulting team, and I've got some information on it already. I do want to push the idea that this region is pushing its way into the space business, aerospace industry, because it is. And is that a means of travel for you and I? Probably not at this point in time, but it may be as time progresses. And I'll just sidestep and tell you that Boeing has spent some major money. They've got their sixth version of an aircraft that can carry four people ninety miles on electric charge without a pilot. So that is the direction, the Jetsons thing is going to happen before, probably before twenty-fifty or anyway. It's a reality. So this is the project list going from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty-four. These projects are already in the works with Tex-odessa and have been steered by your group and by our board. Then we showed you the thirty-five through fifty projects, most of which I've already discussed. And this is a table, and I recognize the table's not too easy to read, but on the middle-right side of the page, you see the hundred and seventy-five million plus for EZ Rider, and then you see the three point four nine eight for four highways. I use this table in the plan on the left side, rather, a chart, to show Tex-odessa that they've invested this kind of money out here. They know they do it. Of course, because they make the decisions with the Transportation Commission to invest out here. But I chose to put this chart in here to remind them you have a history of investing in this region, and our document basically implies that you're going to continue with the investment out here to the tune of three and a half billion over the twenty-five-year window. If I gave you any twenty-five-year period of our existence, we wouldn't get anywhere near that number. We might not even get to one bill. I don't have the homework assignment in front of me to do that. But we'd be hard pressed without, you know, I-20's the big one, but if you take that one away, there's no way there's been a billion spent out here in a long time. So I'm delighted to tell you that's our projection that we'll be able to do this. And the last slide is we comply with federal regulations on performance-based planning, safety, congestion, and the system performance, which is ultimately, that is, are you getting tied up in traffic? And if you are, what can we do about that? An interchange at Eighty-seventh and Three Thirty-eight is one that absolutely would meet that test. Now, as I said at the beginning, things don't happen tomorrow. We're a long-range planning agency. I can tell you, and you're aware of yourself from driving around, there's been a lot of work and some of it done in the last five years that has opened up mobility in the community. So with that, I would tell you we have a town hall meeting at the UTPBC Building, seventeen eighty-eight there and One Ninety-One, on the twenty-ninth, and we would love for you to participate with us. If you have comments, you can go to our website, Permian Basin MPO dot com, and you can say what you'd like to say in the public comments. We'll leave that open through the ninth of November. And we're anticipating going to our board on the eighteenth to request approval from them for the entire document. So I'll be happy to address any questions you may have. It's always is a process creating a plan. We've had great stakeholder involvement. You've got a great team here, Mayor, starting with your representative on our board, and you've got great staff here, Joe Tucker and his team. They're instrumental in bringing what I just described to you and putting in paper. We do the writing part of it. They do the thinking and the reasoning why these projects are and should be on the list.
Kevin, on the town hall, what are you guys going to be presenting at town hall on the twenty-ninth?
Basically this, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we're going to tell everybody about this three and a half billion-dollar plan and the transit side and the Wildcaters Trail and everything we've got going that's multimodal.
So I've gotten to see the preliminary plans for the Loop Three Thirty-eight.
Yes.
I know the MPO's gotten to see it.
Yes.
Me and the judge were there. We talked to Kimberly Horn. Talked to Kimberly Horn sometime last year. You know, the flyover for the Eighty-seventh and East Loop Three Thirty-eight was something that MPO, we had the council prioritize because of the safety situation, One Hundred Street, and so that's the beginning of that. I know the public, for the major part, have not seen that. When are we going to? Talking to Kimberly Horn, we kind of talked about it. They were reviewing it. I think they did the preliminary work because...
This is a divided highway. The problematic parts were on the west side. I know in particular, the north of, between Kermit, Sixteenth Street, Eighth Street was particularly difficult because of what's existing and how they had to move it, and in particular, when they're going to fly over Business Twenty, Murphy, and the interstate, kind of similar to what's going to be what we have on Parkway, Business Twenty. So when, what's the time to finally unveil that for the public to start seeing and viewing that and commenting on that?
Mayor, Tex-odessa would be responsible for holding a public hearing on that.
I knew they said they were good scheduled, but I haven't seen anything come out, so I was just wondering if you had an idea. out, so I was just wondering if you had an idea.
I haven't either. Um, and until the plan gets approved and gets some legs underneath it some time, I don't see, uh, Tech Dot holding a public hearing until one or more of the, the projects become front burner. And eight, the, the closest one, well, there's, there's several of them to be, and I'll tell you what they are. Eighty-seventh is one of them. Fifty-second is another one. West Eighth Street, uh, is, is a third one.
South Loop three thirty-eight.
And you've got, um, uh, the hearings, well, excuse me, uh, you've got three eighty-five south where it ties into three thirty-eight. There's an interchange going there too. That's, uh, thirty-five, right.
We had like two, we added three more and we wanted to move them up.
Eighty-seventh Street.
Yes.
Eighty-seventh, one hundred, eighth, which is eighth and two eighty-five south.
But Tech Dot won't hold a public hearing until they have a design because if they invite you into the room to comment on something, they're not really asking you, should we put it there or should we not? By that time, we're asking that now.
So that, that's basically what we have been talking about, how we need to have, uh, design ready, shelf ready, and this is something we need to put money towards to, to get our engineering.
That's why we've got seven million sitting over ODC left, I think, seven million left, so we can move those projects up.
Yeah.
They, Tech Dot likes us to contribute, and so like three, like three, uh, Yukon and, and the loop, you know, we, I think we put too many into that one.
And ODC did, you're right.
ODC did, and it moved it up on the, on the list. That's, so you've got to kind of play their game. It's.
What, what's our annual contribution from ODC to, uh, for, we doing for these projects? I knew there was a percentage that we can win. Do you, you have, you know what that is?
You, you don't have a, an annual contribution. You make, you make.
We did it one time.
You, yes. You, ODC and the council, because as we know, you have to sign off on, on their proposed actions, uh, you have to concur with them. Uh, they, they have fifteen million dollars in about four or five different projects.
Is it?
ODC and you. And, and there were like two million here, three million there. So there, there's no sort of, if I may, annual program. But if you want to get involved, you, somebody would need to take it to ODC and say, hey.
They got eighty million dollars sitting there uncommitted. If we're going to be accused of having half a billion in our coffers, then I want to address the eighty million dollars that nobody's been moving on that board. I want to know what the problem is. Are they not proactive to want to see Odessa grow?
Well, I, I think at a, at a minimum, there would need to be a, some sort of statement made about, we want to contribute to the Tech Dot highway system.
I will.
Excuse me.
Those conversations have been had on the ODC board and they did specifically in our budget, discuss allocating some more funds towards projects such as.
Did they come up, uh, did they throw about, uh, figure out?
Um, they did, but I would be lying to you if I told you exactly what it was.
Well, at least, but they did discover, uh, they did discuss an amount, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good. At least they're having the conversation.
That is good. Yes. And, and.
Oh, you're right.
Mayor, as you said it, uh, projects get expedited when there's local money in it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Well, good. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Walker, go ahead.
What time is town hall on the twenty-ninth?
I think it starts at five thirty, but I'll make sure you get a personal email telling you. I'll, I'll send it to, uh, uh, to, to the city. I'll send it to Christina and have her, uh, send it to you, sir, and you can go from there, but.
Mr. Walker, just out of personal curiosity, on your maps showing I twenty-seven and I fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
How far north does I twenty-seven begin and is it going to be encompassing what we now know is State Highway three forty-nine? Is that where it's coming through?
That, that's the plan, sir. That's, that's the approved alignment. So yes, if you're coming from the north side, you come from Lamisa or Lubbock.
Lubbock.
Through Lamisa, splits off just, just, uh, well, at Lamisa, comes down toward Midland and the second piece goes to the Big Spring side there. I didn't show you the whole map because most of that is, that, what I'm talking about is outside of our region. But yes, it does come down, ties into the three forty-nine that you're talking about and hits I twenty where it then turns to the east.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
If you've been down, uh, Councilman, if you've been down I twenty, where you get this short of Big Spring, you can take a right and go to Sterling City, or you can take a left and go on top and go to nowhere. And that's where it comes across. So it gets, wonder where it comes across. It literally goes to nowhere.
Okay.
To the right goes Sterling City, it's four lane divided now, so that's where it's going to go.
Yes.
Called the road to nowhere. Road goes all the way up to Amarillo.
Cam, I'd also like to tell the, to the board since Cameron's here, that we got some good news yesterday, since he's here. Uh, Tech Dot told me yesterday that, uh, next week, I think, Cameron, they're going to start work at that bag or section of Eighth and Business Twenty.
Yes.
In front of that convenience store, if anyone's been across that.
Oh, yeah. You got all the ruts.
High center, pretty easy right there, so.
Yes, Councilmember, you're, you're correct. They did tell us that yesterday afternoon. You're right.
We'll get that, because that, again, that's their road.
Mm-hmm. And, and I would like, like to just state quickly, we're, we're responsible for doing the, the planning work and then we, and we work with all kinds of member agencies like, like yourselves. We don't have a stake in the maintenance money. We don't decide when second and eighth get improved or, or Business Twenty gets rebuilt and that's, that's Tech Dot money. And we, we do the planning money. They own the highways, they program when they want to repave them or put a shoulder in or put a signal in. Now, they, they don't leave us in the dark, but my board doesn't make those decisions. That, those are Tech Dot decisions.
Neither do we.
No, we have, we were having a bunch of accidents that coming out of Roses over on, on Fodry and, you know, I talked to Joe about it, we got ahold of, uh, Eric at Tech Dot. They agreed and they put stop signs up. So that's just kind of the way it works because Fodry Road's a state highway.
Stop signs just create more speeding, Councilman, don't you?
Oh, well, there are enough, there's enough speeding on there anyway. It's the people pulling out of there, out of Chick-fil-A and out of Taco Villa.
Yeah.
Roses is a lot of wrecks right there.
Yeah.
We couldn't put a light there because it's a light block away, or less, anyway.
Kathy, any, any comments? Discussion? Cameron, anything else?
I'm good, sir. Thank you very much.
See you out there on the twenty-ninth.
Yes, okay.
John, did you have anything?
No, I was just going to say thanks for all the work you put in on this.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move on to item five, discuss purchasing thirty-five new set of bunker gear for the suppression staff of OFR. Richie, how you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, Odessa Fire Rescue is requesting the purchase of thirty-five sets of protective personal equipment, uh, our bunker gear, um, for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. This money will come out of our, um, lifeline account that we have set aside for it.
Mr. Richie, let me ask you, uh, we did some last year, have we done, did we do two allotments last year? Last, uh, budget?
Some stuff was done prior to us getting here, um, but our usual purchase was done at the, at about the same time last year.
So that was like two years ago then, two and a half years at the most.
Yes, that was done.
Then we had to change and you guys came in here and you guys say there was some money on that.
Trying to.
Yeah.
Um, so a lot of it is, a lot of that first purchase was to staff the personnel at Station six and nine. And then we came up with the second part, which is the annual replacement that we have.
Okay. Yeah. We had that discussion. The reason why I'm asking that question is, has it been widely promoted in the last couple of weeks about how severely underfunded and severely unequipped you are? Um, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, but these are our replacement, we have to replace these, how often?
Correct. So we replace our bunkers every five years. Um, NFPA standards state that we can't have some equipment that's older than a certain amount of years.
Yeah.
And, uh, along with that comes just the annual replacements to keep up with, and we try to do it in sections.
This is mandatory that it's be done.
Yes, it is mandatory. Um, we actually have a TCFB audit next year, so, um, he comes down and makes sure everything's good to go.
Just want to clarify for the record that there has been no, at no point in time has the OFR lacked in this area. It is mandatory, it is a safety feature, and you know, the thing is, you're going into all type of toxic inhalations and, uh, into, into any type of such, uh, response that you have to do.
Correct.
And this, uh, equipment has to be, like I said, at least maximum every five years.
Yes, and it's getting more expensive every year and they're getting more particular about, um, the way we handle it every year.
No, completely understand, completely understand. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I'll just turn out a ball one. Um, Cody, when you see when the bunker gear is being replaced, are you seeing any improvements in the, in the bunker gear?
Oh, yeah, every, every year they replace it. Yes, every year. Um, this year they took out, um, TF, I don't know what it's called. They're, they're making it safer for us every year.
Excellent.
Um, a lot of the times, uh, the stuff that it was being built with was seen to cause cancer, so they took that out. So this new stuff has the updated technology.
Excellent.
It's, uh, safer for individuals because the fires are only getting hotter and more dangerous.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And move on to item six, discuss notification of upcoming water wastewater job order contract request for proposals. Mr. Rollet.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm here to inform you that within the Utilities Department, we will be going to RFP for our Water and Wastewater Utilities Job Order Contract. This contract is for constructing replacement water and wastewater lines, uh, fire hydrant repairs and replacements, valve replacements, new valve installations, manhole repairs and replacements, the installation of water and wastewater taps for citizens, and emergency line breaks within our infrastructure. This contract is essential to improving our current water and wastewater infrastructure for the residents of Odessa. Uh, our department will be allocating three million dollars per year for these projects. This allocation is currently within our budget.
Three million per year?
Per year, yes.
How many years?
Uh, so it's a three-year contract with two extra extensions.
Nine million.
Yes, sir. So the previous contract was done in twenty twenty and they allocate, council allocated three point eight million per year to be spent, no, no more than that. Um, but, uh, we'll be doing three million for the next three.
Counsel, any questions?
Along with RFP's be open on the twenty-ninth.
Ooh, I didn't, I'm not sure. I believe in November it should be done.
Yes, I have a date. This will be open for about three weeks. Submissions will be due on November fourteenth.
So how soon can construction start after?
So currently, we, we still have a contract. That contract ends December thirty-first.
Okay.
So what we're doing is preparing to where we don't have any downtime with, with contractors.
Gotcha. Thank you. Hopefully it'll be seamless and it just continue without a, without a.
Currently it's Madrid. Yes, sir. Currently it's at Gota Madrid and they will be re, uh, they will be rebidding is what I've been told.
They've done a great job.
Yes, yeah.
They'll continue construction, deconstruction and construction. Counsel, any, any questions? Right, thank you, Alex. Thank you very much. Item seven, discuss proposal for adopt twenty twenty-four international codes and the twenty twenty national electric codes. Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, I got to say, you gave me heartburn with this one here. Before you get started. Okay. Yes, um, so we're, uh, I'm going to present this today, um, to go over our new, um, uh, some of the new ICC code updates. Um, and if you have any questions at the end, I say feel free to, or at any point at the end of each slide, feel free to jump in. Um, so this is, uh, this is an update to our international code, which is all of the residential building code, commercial codes for all building permits, uh, fire code as well. Um, so right now, um, we're using the two thousand and eighteen ICC, and so we want to bring this up to, uh, twenty twenty-four. These are renewed, um, uh, are updated, the international codes are updated every three years. Uh, in addition, kind of off year, so on odd years, the national electrical code, which was, um, uh, we were using twenty seventeen will be up to twenty twenty-three, um, because they're, again, they're, they're odd years. So that next one would be, if this is approved, uh, part of this is we would ask to, um, not only approve the, the latest codes, but then to automatically update them every three years. And so the next update to all of the codes except for the NEC would be twenty twenty-seven, and then the, um, NEC, the electrical code would be twenty twenty-six. Okay, so right now, we're using the, again, the twenty eighteen ICC, uh, and I believe we're using the, the twenty twenty-one, um, uh, fire code. So that's what we're doing. We're just basically updating it and then allowing, um, allowing it to be, uh, updated every, every three year increments. And we're going to go over, um, some of the reasons, uh, why. So this is kind of the, uh, kind of what I just talked about, so we'll skip that slide. Um, what are some of the advantages, I guess, of, of doing so? Um, so there's, there's basically three key advantages. One is, um, if there's ever a, a natural disaster or something like that and the codes are updated, then those codes would, um, be, basically, we would be able to get more FEMA money or more, um, things like that in order to, uh, recuperate costs. If, if we're, want to stay behind at twenty eighteen or other cities, they've had, um, other, you know, issues have come up like Lubbock and some of the other cities. Lubbock has now gone to their, uh, uh, updated to the twenty twenty-three for that, uh, for that very reason. Um, another thing is, there's more opportunities for grants and funds, federal grants, state grants, um, available for, for housing. Um, the third reason is, is the upfront costs. Yes, they're going to be, um, and they're, they're still only going to be one to two percent more on average, but, um, over time, with inflation and the building materials going up, if we wait, we miss the opportunity, we're going to be playing catch-up. So that's the, the, the third, um, reason for that. So let me go over some of the, um, the other, um, issues we, uh, we wanted to address here. So all fifty, um, states use, um, the codes, many federal agencies as well, um, that regularly updated, uh, as I mentioned, every, uh, every three years. And the main reason again is to just make sure, um, you've got the public safety side, you've got, uh, the liability side as well. And if we go by the older codes and then there's a fire or something happens to the building and it collapses like that one in Miami, um, maybe the city isn't liable, but the private owner is. And so then that just looks bad on us. So it's really building those relationships with our builders and our developers, uh, and the community at large. So why is it important to update the code? Kind of covered a little bit of that as, as well already. So you're, you're basically saving money over time. Yes, there's going to be some upfront costs, but over time, it will, it will pay for itself. And then having that over three years, it's just, um, going to be, uh, better all, all around for that. Um, you've got the funding availability, also insurance benefits as well. So having the most updated codes are going to be better on the, uh, for getting insurance and things like that. And then, of course, the, the FEMA money. Um, so just, just a little bit of background, um, for all of us here, um, the, what is the ISO rating? So the ISO is the Insurance Service Office. So this is basically measures how well a fire department can protect, uh, the citizens of a community. So it, it does focus a lot on fire equipment and fire safety, but there's a component of ISO that looks at building structure and building, um, codes as well. And so we are currently a one. So from one to ten, um, one is being the best. So, uh, we don't want to lose that rating by, by staying behind. So that's what the, um, the ISO is. And again, we've kind of covered some of these lower insurance costs, enhanced community safety, um, attraction for business and developers, and then community pride and reputation. And this, this last one really, um, it's not often discussed because again, we're, safety is the number one priority in the economic side of it, but it, it really is building those, um, community relationships, um, together and building that trust. Um, one other part of this is if you're the builder or the developer and you're putting Um, one other part of this is if you're the builder or the developer and you're putting in a new, uh, commercial strip mall or you're building, um, multifamily housing or single-family housing in a subdivision, you really wanna have the, um, the best codes you can. Um, that's gonna be an attractive feature, um, in the sale price as well. Um, most of us would rather get a home with the, the most recent 2023 building codes than the, the twenty, or the 2024 than the 2021 code. So that's gonna help the developers. And then once the home buyer buys it, the home buyer will be then in three or four years when they have kids and wanna move into a bigger home, they can sell that. So there's a lot of, um, advantages to it. Um, we kind of talked about some of the other communities. Um, a lot of these were focused on natural disasters, so that's definitely, um, a problem. I mean, hopefully StOvid will never happen again, or at least not for another hundred years. But those things do happen and we've got tornadoes and other sorts of, um, natural disasters or brush fires out in, in West Texas. So it's just gonna keep everyone more safe to have, um, the more updated codes. And that's gonna, again, more, um, more profit for the developer, um, more, um, benefits for the homeowners and then the, the safety aspect to it. So we talked about what the ISO rating was already. Um, we talked about, uh, enhanced public safety. We talked about the energy efficiency, uh, and the cost savings, um, overall. Just to give you a couple statistics, um, a hundred and thirty-two billion in savings over twenty years for communities with updated codes. Um, that was a, a FEMA report that was done. Uh, another statistic here that was interesting was, um, for every one dollar, um, in compliance with codes, saves eleven dollars, um, in, uh, construction and repairs and things like that. And that just makes sense. The worst-case scenario is, is we stay too far behind and then we have issues later. Um, again, and builders are, are reputable and they wanna do a good job, but they're only gonna go as far as the city, in most cases, want them to be. So if the city wants to keep a 2017 code, then they're gonna follow that 2017 code, um, et cetera, so. Okay, so just a couple more slides. What are some changes to the residential code? So, um, energy efficiency, uh, there's structural requirements. Don't wanna get into all the details here. Um, obviously the codes, I thought my zoning code was a lot, but this is, this is much, um, larger than that even in where, again, we're talking international, um, standards here, uh, regardless of what state you're in. What are some changes to the, uh, commercial code? Same thing, so structural, seismic resilience, um, fire safety and prevention, energy efficiency, um, mechanical and plumbing upgrades, electrical system enhancement. So just a lot of things overall that are gonna keep the, uh, buildings more safe and that are going to be able to, um, hopefully, um, again, if they're purchased and sold, there'll be less liability, um, hopefully some increased profit as well. Um, these are some changes to the fire code. Um, I'm gonna have Omar Galindo talk about this one, uh, with the fire department.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
So before I get into this, uh, so fire codes are designed to prevent fires, protect people, and minimize property damage. Some of the, uh, so, so unfortunately, fire codes are based on reactive. You know, they're based on something happened, so cause this code to change or update and whatnot. Here's a list of a few codes that have changed to the, to the fire code. So we're on the IFC 2021. There's a few changes in a couple of years, but for, for, uh, any, in type of construction, it could be something major. It just depends what it is. Some of the things that's changed is, for example, we have improved fire detection and alarm systems. You know, this is help, this is designed to help reduce response time for occupants, whether that be a hotel or anything like that, it's to alert them quicker, let and get them, let them get out faster. Another one is fire-resistant building materials. As we know, construction changes drastically, right? And this covers some of that changes that, 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 some of the material that gets put out. Another change is upgrade, updated egress and exit standards. So this is basically for, to, once again, to allow people to, to exit quicker and more safely out of these venues, whether they be restaurants, whatever the case may be. Uh, there's also a stricter standard for higher hazard area. There's areas where the flammable materials and whatnot, there's, it, it, it covers that a little bit more. Uh, enhance fire department access and response. There's, uh, updated requirements for fire lanes and building access because it's just allowing us to quick to, not only for the occupants to get out quicker, but for us to, eh, be able to respond quicker and get into the building itself. One of the big ones is battery storage and alternative energy savings. So because of lithium ion batteries, there's been a lot of changes, uh, a lot of codes that trying to keep up with it. Unfortunately, this changes so much that by the time this gets adopted, there'll probably be other changes that have to come with it. And right now there's not a whole lot on ion batteries. The codes don't cover that because it wasn't a thing back then. So as it changes, it tries to upkeep it and progress. Uh, that's all I have for fire code. Yes, sir.
Mr. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So are the parts that we're swapping to, are, is all of this readily available now? I'm talking about, if you're gonna enforce something, you gotta make sure there's at least enough to build a, a section of housing out of this. So what I'm asking is, is all of this stuff readily available in the supply houses and where people can get it without spending an arm and leg on making these changes? So, cause it becomes special order, be a special order that, then nobody's gonna build here.
So for like sprinkler systems, alarms, stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
It stuff is pretty much readily available. However, a lot of times because of construction here, there, they fall, and that happens now. It's just hard to get hold of because of where we're at. So a lot of times they do have to special order and do that, but that just happens now.
Okay. So that's the only thing I'm worried about is.
Yes, sir.
Try to enforce something, so, um, maybe we can look at the city codes and, you know, as you're making these changes, we can just bring it in slowly into that so that it doesn't overwhelm everybody up, right up front.
Yes, sir.
That way the supply houses have a chance to get the stuff in, cause if you passed it today, nobody would have this tomorrow. Even though we live in a society where you should get stuff left and right.
Understood.
It's never gonna happen, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, that was my only question. That's, anytime you make a big jump from regulations from six years ago to this, that's a big jump.
Right.
And so that's a lot of years where you didn't bring products in through the after years, so.
Absolutely, and most of those products are already out there and they're being used. There's just not any enforcement on how to use them.
Okay.
Does your office, uh, as a, um, fire marshal, do you all do periodic inspections of, um, companies or that have, uh, flammable storage?
Yes, sir, we do. So the building co, the fire code is more of a maintenance code where we go in annually and we have hazardous areas where we, uh, go by annually. Of course, we're shorthanded just like anybody else, so we try to hit as many businesses as we can. But we do, we hit high hazard areas like, such as those places, restaurants, bars, nightclubs. We try and, and we used to hit the game rooms when they were here. So we have ha, hazard areas that we try to focus on, at least to get those.
Okay, great.
I have another question. So how does this affect businesses?
Oh, thank you. How does this affect businesses that are already in business? So if y'all like go on a call or you go do an inspection, you see that they're outdated. And do you make them come up to the 2024 code or are they allowed to keep what they have? And that, I'm sure that's gotta be a huge issue.
Excellent question. So when we adopt these codes, we also adopt the international existing building code, which covers specifically that, that says if you have an existing bil, bil, building, business, they can maintain, they can maintain as such up until they do certain things like they start remodeling, renovating, adding square footage to a building. Then they have to meet whatever the fire code is at that point. But up until then, that's what covers the existing buildings.
Thank you.
My question is similar, but it's probably Mr. Fisher on that one there. Uh, Odessa, a lot of our homes are older than five years. And I'm, I'm concerned on the, um, um, it's always good for new construction, but how, how do we handle pre-existing older homes? Cause we have a lot of retirement communities, we have retired citizens, uh, we, uh, how is that balanced? I can see where it needs to go for new construction. I'm having a hard time on the residents that don't have that type of revenue to bring their property up to par after post-construction. How's that balanced?
Do you mind if I answer that?
Sure.
Yep. It's, that's the same, it's, that falls on back on the building code. It's, it's designed the same way as a fire code. It doesn't affect the resident up until he does some type of work.
Same thing then.
Yes. So once he comes in and says, you know what, I wanna add room to the house, I wanna do whatever, then that's when the building code basically takes an effect and says this is what you have to do. But up until that point, it, it really doesn't affect them.
Okay, I can breathe, I can breathe better.
So there's gonna be lots of education.
Yes.
Continuing educating people on that.
Absolutely, yes. And, and we kind of try to do that now as we go out and do routine inspections for all the businesses just so they know what's coming, what's expected and whatnot.
Do we have our hometown halls for this kind of thing? When we're changing?
We have before, yes. When we adopted the twenty-one, we actually, uh, reached out and reached out to the contractors and said, this is what we're doing and this is what the changes are, do you guys wanna come in? We did have some turnout, not excellent, but we had a few contractors showed up and basically discussed it with us and told us their ideas and thoughts.
Um, with the building code, you, you mentioned the Miami example, um, which was, whenever we adopt these codes, do we, with those codes, I mean, they have certain types of weather that we don't have for like hurricanes. But would that pertain, would that be included in building codes for, uh, West Texas?
Well, I think, uh, for building codes, it's all specialized on what areas you're in, right? So some of that, like you're saying, seismic and all that, would probably not, it's not gonna affect this.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, nobody's asking the tough questions, so. Get your pens and papers. I'm gonna have some questions.
Absolutely.
And I already, I already prepped Omar on this. Okay, so you're bringing this up. I've been through this. So we went from 2018 to 2021, okay? Now we're moving up and we're being asked to do it every three years, okay? I asked this question to the council in 2018. I ask every council member up here on this side, do you understand what you're, you, you are adopting? Oh, yeah, yeah. No, 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 you don't. And neither will we. There is just no way. The question about, is it called the international codes? And this is electrical, plumbing, it's everything. Yes, you are gonna have to adopt some things that happen in, 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 in Florida. Now, look at the pictures. With the swells that they had in the last two, two, uh, two hurricanes, them roofs came through, but not the building. Okay, the buildings were pretty much smashed, but you know what? The structure and the bones stayed up and, and a lot of the roofs did. Uh, I know you're gonna do the roof and I know what the clips I have to put on when you start doing redecor. Uh, and so let me tell you one thing, we have similar, similar type of winds. Sometimes, I mean, we don't even have to have a tornado. It's not uncommon to see a sixty-plus mile an hour wind hit through in a burst. So these were the questions, this is what I asked Omar. Um, Dan, how many, how many industrial district, uh, agreements do we have? We, we just solved, we just solved two. This council just solved, in the last two years, we did two, and that was extensive.
I wanna say about eighteen or so.
Okay.
Eighteen is my estimate.
Well, I know that we have to do increments. We have, uh, uh, quite a bit of industrial, uh, district agreements that we have to renegotiate. We, 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 we did a, we did, we have a standard, we have a template.
Right.
Now, in trying to understand these, we were trying to figure out what was going on with industrial districts. None of us knew what they were and what was the working mechanism. So we figured out that, one, the payment of the property tax was going through a third party that used to be Karen McCord.
Ms. McCord.
That used to be with the appraisal district, now is in Waco, retired again, about three thousand dollars. Everything was going through her and then they would send it into the customer. We couldn't make heads or tails why that was occurring. The appraisal district basically said it's because, well, think about this. If there's a, like the rest of us who pay our property tax, if we don't pay it, we're being, we, well, the courts are gonna come and take it. There is no recall mechanism when it goes through the third party like Ms. McCord. And she, and, and she wanted to get out of it. I think we're paying about three thousand, we, we've gotten out of that.
And I think billing collections do.
Yes, so what we did learn is that in the last two, uh, industrial districts, we had a lot of older structures. And the code enforcements, they're still in 2018. In fact, before 2018 was adopted, we were what, 2015, 2012? Twenty twelve, right? Twenty twelve, we run from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen. And then now we, we jumped to where we are and now we're jumping again. But a lot of those buildings, thirty, forty, fifty years old. A lot of them are down, business twenty. And the re, what we found out, what we gotta educate on the data, it would cost millions to bring them up. So these codes are not gonna be distributed equitably. These are new owners, remodels, okay, even at the homes. And these new, when we went from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen, you now had to install more battery-powered and electrical-powered, uh, smoke detectors. Created a headache. One of the biggest headaches everybody on this council deals with is the ancil system, the sprinkler system. We have one company that comes out of Lubbock that does, costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So each and every one of us have heard extensively from the builders. And one of the things is when we came on, we tried to work this through. So here's my question. My question is, we have eighteen, I know we, I need to know exactly how many, uh, industrial, uh, agreements that we have.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
Now, it's not just the size and the footprint of, of, of the district. It's the amount of different property owners within that district that could be hundreds.
Yes.
Now, are they gonna comply? Even though the contract between the city and these industrial districts, these companies are supposed to keep up with the current codes, it's not been enforced. You know, they're just saying it like it is, it just has not been. It's nobody's fault, it just hasn't been because we all know the, it's been, this is just the way it, it, it was at the city. So that's something that this council and future councils are gonna have to deal with. This is something we inherited and, you know, we, we were educated. Now we've, we've laid a foot, a, a template to be able to go forward. The other is, uh, a lot of builders that are, that weren't here in 2018 that are here, what do I have to deal with? A, there's, there's a huge education that's gonna be had that not everyone is going to be present to learn. They're gonna do a simple remodel and then they're gonna come up with all these fees. And let me tell you, our fees are very low when it comes to pulling out the permits. I know the staff is looking at adjusting that, that's gonna be another hairy-carry, uh, uh, reality that's gonna happen. So second, what is the timing for the council to look at this and the, uh, adoption, uh, as we go to council for adoption? What are the times that we're looking at within the next twelve months, six months, eight months? Uh, because, and then two, let me put it to you, you start reading building codes, you will be asleep in five minutes. I've read building codes, okay? And I've tried, and I've had to write, uh, when bidding, bidding, uh, jobs, you know, a lot of this stuff. Thank God for AI, it's really helped me. Uh, so it will put you to sleep. A lot of the language when you get into electrical is very, very, it, it's hard to follow if you don't know the industry. Thank God I've got a son that's an electrician. So, um, what's the timing? How much time does the council have? I like the question about, do we have town hall meetings? Uh, it's not so much town hall meetings that we wind, that we, you, we need to talk to the, the builders, contractors, developers. We, you know, those guys are like herd and cats. I will tell, and we all know because I know some of the council members, and we've had a committee put together on that, they don't like any change. They're pretty getting used to this one, they still complain, they're not gonna like any change. So the, I'm gonna tell it right off the bat, none of them are gonna want the, yes, sir.
So we can educate, we have enough community colleges here that we can educate people on what's going on. Will those colleges pick this up and bring it up to standards? Because are they still teaching 2018 here? What are they teaching on? That's some of the stuff that we need, cause we're teaching a young, a young group like electrical right now, which is probably one of the major things that.
I'm not, I'm not talking about, uh, uh, educating the workforce. I'm talking about a resident and that's gonna come in and pull a permit and he's gonna have a cow when he starts realizing all the additional stuff he has to do that he doesn't, and he doesn't care. He just feels it doesn't have to apply to him.
Okay.
And so it, it's not about educating the workforce. And the builders that are gonna build this out, they're gonna do what they tell them to do. But I will tell you, you know, from experience that, you know, the contractors, the developers, the general contractor, the developers, this is gonna add additional costs, it's gonna add additional costs to the build-out. That's gonna be passed on to consumer with the inflation rates. This is gonna, and, and I understand it's gonna have to happen. I mean, we have a situat, we have a small little incident, you know, give you an example without, you probably know who I'm talking about. So you had an, an individual not too far from here has a, has a restaurant. You had a third party to do, uh, an inspection at their restaurant. They have a hot plate that they've had there for fifteen years, all they're doing is heating corntier. Third party comes in, he's brand new to the job, red tags him, threatening to shut him down. He's had that sucker, all he does is put corntier, cor, cor, raw corntier, heats it up, he's had it there for fourteen, fifteen years. And there was a small sliver of gap between two hood, hood of it. And he said, hey, smoke can go through that and it can cause a fire. Okay, not a problem. He had another one's a splash plate to a, um, a, uh, a fryer. He built it himself, he would have bought it, it would have been three hundred bucks. I saw it, it was perfect. He asked one question. How do I put the sleeve of material? Which, what material do I put and where do I put it? Do I put it up against the two-by or do, because there were two different levels, one was flat and. Or do, because there were two different levels, one was flat and one came out, I said, do I L it, or do I put it flat? I don't think he ever got an answer from anybody. And it's those little things, now that's just something, inspection. You start getting into a code, you know, that's volume stick, and you're gonna have that a million times over. And I'm telling you right now, you will get calls, you will get people upset. Uh, so we knew this was coming. I think last, two years ago, we were at TML, I went and talked to all the organizations to ask them what was our requirements, what we had to do, and I told them where we're at, he goes, oh, you guys are behind, y'all need to come up. We learned about ISO ratings. Uh, this is the first that Odessa's been in, in that ISO rating, and it's due to a lot of the work that's been done with the fire department. We relate that you go outside the city in unincorporated areas, and most people don't even carry home insurance because it's unaffordable. So now we understand the importance of it. But I would ask, if we're gonna proceed with this, please tell us what we're looking at timing, what we're doing to best educate those that I know they're gonna be coming, and we're gonna be looking at companies like Bosworth, that is the umbrella for all the plumbing, primary all the plumbing companies. Get your developers, your local developers, your bigger developers, your, uh, your home builders, they're used to this, just like they're used to impact these, but it's the local ones. And then those general contractors, you know, you're gonna get Sturg, I can't name them all, but Sturgeon, things of that nature. Uh, give them a heads up that this is, that this is being discussed. I don't know how we get that out, but take that into consideration, and I'm telling you why, because we start putting that out, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, we've been through this, I'm just thinking, trying to think out of the box, asking, that, right now is the time to ask the hard questions. I asked Omar, I'm gonna go back, so you're gonna get some questions? Be prepared, nobody likes surprises unless it's birthday. And, uh, so if you can help us with that, because let me tell you guys, you guys are learning the gun, bullets in the gun, we're the ones that are gonna take the shot, we're the ones that are gonna be in the front. And, um, this will cost heartbreak. I, I'm, I'm telling you, I've seen, I've, I've seen it, I've been through it, it happens everywhere. It does cost, it costs a lot. And so, and not everybody, even people in the industry don't know all the rules. And let me tell you one of the things that gets, we get the most. When we have inspectors go out and do an inspection, and they're doing a, an overall inspection, they felt, they hit one dig, they stop, they stop the inspection, they leave. All the contractors are asking is like, finish your inspection, give us, give it to us all. Give us all the digs that we need to do, give us one list, then let us fix it, and then come back. But don't stop at one, leave, then come back, and then do it again, you find another one to stop, because what happens, time is money. One of the biggest things that we get is like, man, I'm trying to get this thing, and I got this place, but every time somebody else comes in, they find another day, not starting the process over. Time is money. And so this is one thing that we constantly hear. So if we can start working through those, it would really, really help us. It'd give us a little bit of understanding, because you're talking to a, a, a die that's gonna have to, uh, sink their hands in, try to learn the industry as really possible, you're not gonna be able to, and they make some decisions. We're up to mandate, understand, you know, uh, there's some, there's some people in the community that, man, just go back to 2012. I, I know I've heard it, and so, I know Ms. Swan heard it a lot when she put that together, you go, hey, just go back to the way it was. I think what we've experienced as a community by the fire that we saw at the apartment complex, how long ago was that, Chief?
January 1st.
And then the, what we saw at, uh, University in Grandview, and what we've saw out in the county, hundreds of times over. I think we all believe that we need to do this, but we also want to be able to be as fully prepared for it too, because this is not gonna be an easy process, and this is not gonna be fun.
And that's, and I think that's my biggest ask, is just to, um, allow for some town halls for these builders and contractors to participate in, and if they don't show, they don't show, that's on them, but at least we're making that effort to go out there and educate them on this. One, one complaint that I, that I got a few times was, um, and I think, you know about this, Omar, is there is a contractor who wanted, who needed to put a sprinkler system in, and he's done, he's done these in PVC in other, other cities, and it wasn't allowed here, but it was, it was, it's, it's approved, it's allowed in other cities, but just not in Odessa. Then there's, there needs to be some more uniformity in, in those kind of issues also. I think if we just lay the, lay the groundwork for these guys first, then I think we can , uh, uh, just help things along.
And Councilman Motte, that is one of the things, that's, that very one is one that I talked to Elizabeth about. Some things with this move to the newer ones is actually easier.
Correct.
And one of them is the plastic piping for the fire dials. And for your larger builders, and that's not so much who you're talking about, like you said, they, they know what they're doing. This makes it more uniform for them across communities that have moved to the newer standards. I'm worried about the same people that we're worried about.
Yep.
The local guy that's gonna have to redo everything that he's been doing now for at least six years.
Yeah.
And, uh, but at the same time, our fire department and the city has worked very hard to get that ISO one.
Yes.
And it's worth a lot, and at some point, we could lose it.
Correct. Uh, the, Councilman, the, the, the specific one you're referring to is actually a, a amendment, which, you know, when we adopt the fire code, we adopt amendments and we adopt annexes. So that's getting revisited, that's gonna get removed, only because, uh, construction has changed. It's not the same as it was back in 2012 and all that. Along with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, you mentioned sprinkler systems, alarm systems, construction, I'm not that savvy on construction, however, sprinkler systems, alarm systems, you know, there's not a big change to that from 21, 24. What's required in 21 is still gonna be required in 24, uh, even back to probably 12, there's not a whole lot of changes. Uh, most of those guys in the, in the, in that type of, uh, in those type of, uh, if you do sprinkler systems, you adopt, you, you design them, you, whatever purpose you have, those guys are pretty savvy, they're already designing 24 systems, we're just reviewing them on 21, because that's what we're under. So those guys are, know they're coming, they know that most cities adopt and move up. Uh, I don't, I can't speak for the local or the, uh, construction, because I'm not familiar with that, I don't.
Yeah, these guys complain about everything.
Yeah.
Just complaining about everything.
That's what they say, they ain't making no money. But is there any way you can figure like a percentage raise on, from going from this code, what it's gonna cost, just a percentage-type deal?
Uh.
Something that we could talk to people about? Hey, man, we, it's easier to sell a percentage than it is to sell $30,000, you know what I'm saying?
Okay. This is something that I have to meet with Elizabeth, and she's probably more savvy on that, she'll have to give me that information so I can present it.
Every guy's different. So what do we, what do we, where are we gonna revisit this?
I think what we'll, yeah, I think what we'll do is, um, we'll have, uh, include our development director, um, other staff as well. Wanted to thank Omar's department and Omar, of course, for being here, as well as, uh, building permit staff that helped us prepare the presentation. So I think, uh, we would reconvene at this point, we've taken all your comments and concerns, and then we can work on a, on a timeline to go forward, including, uh, looking into the town hall, or town halls, yeah.
It'll be helpful.
Sure.
It'll just be helpful, all right? That way we have a plan, and we know what we're looking at, and just prepare for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Omar.
Uh, we're gonna move on to Idemake Gallagher to discuss the finalization of preliminary compensation numbers based on the outcome for the customer service. Ms. Griffin.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
City Manager, Dan Anorma. So we're coming before you, um, to hopefully finalize or discuss with you the finalization of the first phase of this initiative, which is the compensation phase. And this phase actually drives the next two phases. So we want to be able to share where we are and provide how we got here with regard to benchmarking jobs, looking at the current pay, and assessing it against the market. So, um, as we talk about the numbers, I have, um, the finance director here with me as well, so we can make sure that we provide you with all of the information. So Gallagher has joined us again, and I'm gonna turn it over to them, and then we can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, um, for having us back to provide you additional feedback and, from the questions you had, uh, a couple of weeks ago when we presented, um, to give you more detail to help make the decision, uh, with the goal being, of course, for you all to approve an approach that we're gonna take to move forward. We're gonna go over the collection of data, uh, what that means, how we treat it, to make sure it's valid and relevant and accurate, go over the findings, preliminary costing options, and the recommendations for the structure, and then, of course, plenty of time for you all to ask questions. So we've talked a lot about, um, market data, and so what that means, to give you a little more information about that, is we gather salary survey data from published survey sources, and what that means is that we use the largest and have access to the largest survey houses in the country, and those are listed there, it's Willis Towers, Watson, Mercer, Comp Data, and then also the Economic Research Institute. And the reason that one is important is, ERI is the industry most recognized for being able to place a geographic differential on a job if needed. So if we are having to pull a national match versus something in this area, they give us the correct app, supplier to put on that to make sure it's relevant for the city of Odessa. So for the published survey sources to be viewed as valid and used by us, they have to be conducted by a reputable firm, which these are, these are the top, um, firms in the, that are recognized in the compensation realm. The survey cannot be self-reported, these are all, um, organizations report this information back to these survey houses so that they can vet the information, um, and smooth that, identify outliers and make sure it's accurate and relevant. Then it also has to be done on a continual basis, all of these are done annually. Um, ERI does also refresh their data every quarter, and then the survey reports do need to know, uh, note when the data is pulled from, meaning what was the date of the employee data collected. Um, typically, that's gonna be March 1st, um, in any given year, and then, um, what organizations participated in that. And so what we do with that, and when we're talking about a market match, it's important to point out, for a market match from our standards, when we're looking at a job, it has to be 80% comparable in duties and responsibilities to the other jobs that we're looking for the information on. And that's the standard used in all reputable compensation practices, that is the best practice. So one thing we also want to look at when we're getting the information is, what is the labor market we're looking at? And so there are different, um, ways we look at this, because we need as much data as we can get. First, we look at the type of organization, making sure it's comparable, if it's a city, we look at counties, other things that, in some instances, we've looked at the private sector, oil industry being most prevalent here. Um, we look for the organization to be of a comparable size, offer similar services, and geographic location is absolutely a consideration. And then if it's something, um, that's a city that you aspire to be like, or where you see yourself in five years, we look at those things as well. And then we also look at this, just to make sure everything is aligned, both at the organization level, and then also at the broader job market. So the point is, everything needs to match up for us to be able to consider it a relevant data source. So when we're looking at a benchmark job, and when we go through these lists, and we've been working with Evette for probably four or five months at this point, um, we've gone over what a benchmark job is. One, it needs to be representative of the largest employee population we can get, it needs to represent all levels of the jobs here at the city of Odessa, we want to make sure all job families are included, so it may, you know, we won't necessarily find a match for every single job, but we want to make sure the job families are represented. We also want to pay particular attention to high-population jobs, um, and we want to make sure that there are jobs that are found in most organizations, because that will provide us the most data available. And then most, one of the more important things too, is that the, anything you have difficulty recruiting for or retaining talent for, uh, we want to make sure we're paying particular attention to those jobs as well. One thing that we did also, um, for you all, we worked with Evette to determine that a custom survey was needed. We were able to select, I think it was 65 jobs, uh, that were designated as hard to fill or hard to retain the talent in, and it allowed us to identify a group of organizations that we could send a custom survey to, where we got to tailor the questions, um, to what was really most needed here for Odessa, whether that was as far as, um, performance, pay, um, incentives, things of that nature, how their salary pay administration works and their practices. We did include government, oil and gas industries, education and medical, and also other businesses. The ones who did participate are listed here for you, you can see that, we have 17 of the 45 that were included, uh, which actually, that is a really good response, we're, we're lucky to get 25% typically. So the fact that we had a, a 38% response from the participants is, is really, really pretty remarkable. Um, we do also want to make sure we talk about the fact that, um, there are rules about how we can share this information and what we can do with this. If we don't have at least five responses from the organizations for any particular job title, we cannot share that information separately. It will be aggregated into that other published survey data that we spoke about. Um, so we still use the information, but if we don't have at least five responses, um, we can't share that as its own separate data point source. And that's just according to the Federal Trade Commission for antitrust regulations. Um, this we have shown, I wanted to clarify for you all or reiterate that we had, um, the city of Odessa has 900 or, and 18 employees with 381 unique job titles, all right? And so we were able to get 91% of all employees covered in the benchmark titles that we were able to match up with the market, and there was 292 of those jobs. So that's a significant, uh, portion of the employees, and also a significant number of the jobs that we were to be able to match either to those published survey sources or through the custom data. So this gets into the findings, and this shows, this is rolled up, because at this time, you know, we have this rolled up at the department level, right? This is to show, um, where they align to the market. And when we talk about the market, we're talking about that column that's the second from the right, which is the market 50th percentile. Outside of any, um, significant anomaly, most organizations go with the 50th percentile, that is what's called the market average. And what we mean when we're looking at this is, we want to make sure that you're positioned in a way that you can attract and retain the talent that you have. And so what this says, if you're aligned with the 50th percentile, you should hopefully be able to, uh, retain your top talent that you have, and then also attract new talent when it's needed. And then the 75th percentile is another alignment. So you'll notice they are color-coded, and what those color codes do mean is, if it's the light yellow, that means it's more than 16% outside of the market average, which that's where we kind of classify it as, and, uh, misalignment potentially. There are reasons this does occur, um, sometimes it's, it's longevity in a role, uh, things of that nature could show why their jobs may be paid a bit differently, or if, in inverse, it could be someone that's new to a role if it's on the low end. So any of those highlighted in the light pink show is that, um, opposite end of that, and they are more than 15% below the market. And that is, what we're really looking at are those top, the last two columns, meaning the market 50th percentile, because that's really, um, the standard for being a competitive position. Then the 75th percentile would allow you to obtain a more competitive market position than what's average. So this is just one sheet, the next screen is also, um, additional jobs. One thing I do want to call out is, only jobs with incumbents, um, were listed on here, and there were a couple of, um, areas where we did not have an incumbent in the department, uh, in the benchmark data, so we weren't able to provide the numbers on those. But we will have individualized, um, job-level detail, once we establish the approach we're gonna take. So overall, this is, um, an important slide, because this shows aggregated for both the custom survey and the published survey data, on a combined basis, it shows that your salaries are 11% below market, uh, at the 50th percentile, right? So that does not include any ancillary benefit pay or, um, any other types of incentives, this is strictly just base pay. So it's showing, um, you're 11% below the market there. And then if we're looking at the 75th, that shows to be potentially misaligned at 21% So we do have some preliminary costing to go over with you today. The assumptions made here are standard, of course Gallagher would never, uh, recommend any pay cuts be given to any employee, that would not be anything we would ever recommend. Um, we do also. We do also recommend that the employees are all brought into the new pay structure once it's implemented, meaning no one is going to be paid below the new entry of whatever grade they're in when the new structure is implemented. One thing we're also looking at is strategic adjustments. And what that is, is the comparison of where they are placed in the salary range today based against today's fiftieth percentile, you know, that market average, and then adjust those to that same position relative to the new midpoint in the structure that's selected. So for example, if they're five percent below the market average today, with our comparison, when the new structure was implemented, that strategic adjustment for them would bring them to five percent below the midpoint of that new structure. So here's the costs. Here's some preliminary numbers. Want to point out a couple of things. This does have the cost associated with placing the employees in the range, as we said, and then also those strategic adjustments. One thing is the fire and police salary structures were updated earlier this year. So the population affected by that, were involved in that, are not a part of these numbers. I'll give you a minute to look at that. And then to go on, just for additional clarification, like we said, the goals today are to make sure we can establish what the city of Odessa's compensation philosophy means and what that's going to be. And what we mean by that, it's, it's your, how you desire to be, be paying your employees, whether that's at the fiftieth percent of market or at that seventy-fifth percentile, whether, you know, we want to go with the average or a more aggressive position. So we're looking for your approval on a designation on which approach the city would like to take. And that will allow us to move forward with the project to determine how those, those ones would be applied. We would also look to follow best practices as far as range spreads go. And that means that's the width of the range from the entry level to the maximum. That's what the range spread is. And then also the midpoint progression, meaning from one grade to the next one above, would have a consistent progression following best practices because that helps you proactively address succession planning and career progressions with the city. So the review that we've gone through, we, and the considerations, like I said, do show us, and we do have it with smoothing the step structures. We do plan to decrease the number of grades that you currently have because that just helps with administration transparency and your budgeting purposes. And then also it does help with communication with the management and employees. And one thing we would like to note, that the four percent cost of living adjustment that went into effect in October earlier this month is anticipated to reduce the costs on the previous screen by one point one six million dollars. Your turn.
So when you, when you, your last statement, the one point one six million dollars will come off of the combination of option one, option two totals? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, we all, we all understood it.
Yes.
Yes, it would come off of the total increase to payroll costs, the bottom line in each box. And the reason that is, is that number is because more than fifty percent of the payroll costs for the city are police and fire.
It's okay. I just want to make sure.
This is the annual, the additional annual cost, right?
Correct. So, so what's happening here is that the fire, police, that money, you, you save on the implement cost of us changing the structure. That number's still, that four percent, half of that's still going to go to fire, police, if you're giving everybody a four percent cost of living. So you're saving it on the implementation cost, but the money's still.
It's still going to be saved.
Yeah, so I don't think it's like you're saving. You're saving it in this instance, but it's still money.
That's why I'm trying to make it clear.
Great question.
No surprises.
What I really want to point out here is you've got two options, right? And these options, if you go with, and there's advantages of being a big market aware, which is market median, and it is advantage of being at the seventy percentile. Clearly, at the seventy percentile, you're paying more. But you've got a lot of competition in the area where you might say, hey, you know, we can't really compete versus, you know, the Ewing's or whatever. Oil companies are there. So, so you can talk about those. So with option one or even option two, Gallagher would give you ways to get there over time. I wouldn't suggest you saying, hey, you know, unless you have it, this, this is about six point seven million dollars to do that. This was based off of our preliminary assumption that we're going to take your structure that you have today and make it market aware for both those options. So we're going to take your option as it is and move it towards the median or move it towards the seventy-fifth percentile. That's what those costs are. So let's just say we stay standard, option one into the median, we're coming at it at about three point five million dollars, okay? Now that could be done over time, where you could say, hey, you could attack it in certain different ways. If you look at that line adjustment to the median, you could say, hey, this year we're just going to adjust to the median and do the cost of living that you planned. Or you can start to more where we work with HR. And then if you say, hey, let's do this strategic alignment, let's fix these people, let's not fix these people right now, we can do it over time. It's not an immediate result, but something that you should consider. Or you could say, let's go to the seventy percentile, which would make your cutting edge. You'd reduce some of your issues that you have for turnover. But then that's, that's something you could consider, and some cities do that when they can.
I just want to interject here also is that the numbers that we're using are base salary. So it doesn't include, as footnoted on there, the benefit cost and taxes or incentive pay. So it's important to note that.
So the question I've got is that, is just really from twenty-five thousand foot level. So if we do option one, go to the median, is that going to substantially help us keep lower paying jobs that we're competing for that are so instrumental? Our street sweepers, our, our general utility people, our animal control, you know, those guys, water treatment people that supposedly are getting a low wage, you know, are they going to help us recruit those people?
Yes, because you will at least be in, you'd be better than half this area and not as good as the other half. Obviously, the seventy percentile will really help, right? This is, this is math. But now, if you put in and get yourself to the median, you're not going to lose somebody instantly or very easily to mid. You're not going to lose somebody very easily to loving, right? They'll at least say, hey, this is relatively competitive, right? I'll stay here in the one and only right place in Texas.
Got you. Thank you. Do that's nice.
I have a question, but maybe directed at city manager. When the city hires a new employee in whatever department they come into, what is the process for bringing in that employee into the city employment? Is it, who sets the salary for that employee?
And just like with your personal business, some of that's going to depend on the, the, the require, not the requirements, qualifications that that employee brings in at that, what level he gets, he or she gets put at in that band for the job that they're applying for. And that's primarily what's going to set it, has that employee. So if, and we've just talked about that too with, with Mr. Haney. We hear a lot of times, we pay so much less than anyone else that it's, that it's amazing. We can get somebody to work. But we hear that from also, and this is a whole philosophical thing, but we hear that also about, okay, we've got somebody that, and I always use ditch diggers because that's how I started out in the oil field, digging ditches in the oil field. We aren't always comparing apples and apples. We're comparing the guy that's been on that rouse spout crew for ten years with the guy that we just hired. And he is getting paid more, but the guy that got hired last week's maybe not being paid significantly more. And I say all that to say that this midpoint, the, the midpoint is not a bad place to start. But as far as how it's determined, it's no different than any other job. It's based on the requirements, the part of the qualifications that person brings in.
Maybe to be more specific about my question, and I'll end it there. Let's say that Chief Cotton has an applicant for a firefighter to his department. And Rogelio Salcido has a employee available to hire for the billings department. Again, my question specifically is, does Chief Cotton set the salary for that, that new firefighter coming into his department? Does Mr. Salcido set the salary for that employee coming into his department? Or does it go through a human resources process?
It's in conjunction with human resources, and you all helped set the ones for Chief Cotton's here a few months ago. But it had already been, it had already been through finance, it had been through human resources. Chief Cotton and his team had taken the resources that we had available, taken studies such as some of the same resources that I'm sure Gallagher uses, looked at that comparable. Two different departments, more in the region than, than outside, came up with a structure. Then we went to HR and finance, can we afford this within the budget? And that's where, then it came to you all. So the answer is yes. It went through all of that. This would apply, and you all correct me if I'm wrong. You, you use billing and collection to be specific as another department. This probably has more impact on a department like billing and collection to set what we currently call bands, but set the ranges in there that somebody would be hired into. You're, you're, you know, I've heard it said that ideally you hire into the bottom of a range. But I don't know, coming from somebody that hired, has hired people for over thirty-five years now, I don't know that that's true. I kind of want to hire towards the top because I'm getting a better person. But it's based on the qualifications that somebody like Rogelio would set up because that's his department and he knows what's going to go into it as far as qualifications. But the range itself should be affected by this here.
Yes, so what, what the city manager shared was absolutely correct. And I think one of the biggest challenges we have with a department like Rogelio's in Nivemine or Kaylee's or whatever is that we budget at the bottom level for the tier. So, and we hire or rehire based on what we have in the budget. And so that's what creates a lot of the issues in terms of not being able to pay at market because we're working with the budget number that we have for that particular position.
And something that you all did with the budget that you may not have realized that you did is actually mitigates that to an extent. I don't have now five billing collector, I know that's not a real job here, but billing collector ones that you have budgeted out there now. Those went away. They were empty, they went away. Now Rogelio comes in here and says, I need a billing collector two. Give, fund it for me, please. That's what you all have gone through last two weeks ago, funding those kind of things. We've been hampered dramatically through the city by these arbitrary limits of grades that we could hire into because that's what was budgeted for. Now you give me a, you, if you're a director, you give me a justification why you need this type of employee, not a grade one, grade two, because that's what you had budgeted. But you can say, I need a grade two, and I've got, and I think I can get applicants out there. Then you can hire qualified people for that position without some arbitrary cap on the number that you could hire there.
Thank you all.
And it's going to be great that we, because at the end of all of this, Gallagher will be handing us a structure and one that we can actually do the proper research. Anytime that there is going to be a new hire, making sure that, as the city manager mentioned, that we're not just picking numbers out of the air, that we have actual raw data that we can work with to price a job. And we don't currently have that in place today.
That's where I will be heading with what I hope this, you know, results from there.
Yes. So the first phase of it was the compensation pay phase, what you've been presented today. This will drive the next phase, which, which is creating the classification structure, also developing the performance management measures because we want it pay for performance to be included. Also reviewing the incentives. So this next phase is a huge phase, which is why we wanted to come before you and talk about where does the city want to, how do they want to be viewed as an employer? Do you want to pay at the fifty percentile or seventy-five percentile? Help us develop that compensation philosophy so that it will drive the rest of the process.
Well, ideally, everybody wants to be in seventy.
Exactly.
Like, what can we afford?
But the thing is, then you get the sticker, shocker, ooh.
Yeah, for sure.
And so then you have the, the basement bottom at fifty percent, so you have to hit somewhere in between.
Yes, for sure. And which is why we wanted to make sure we factored in the cost of living adjustment so that that would be taken to an account.
I'm glad you said that. You said something earlier that basically is that for percentage ideally, because, you know, when you have a budget, you know, I've been through, been on this council, I've seen the evaluations go from the star rating. And everybody used to get so mad about that star rating. If I just told some, you know, all the parks department employees, I said, look, why do we always get a three, three percent or four percent? Nobody ever gets a five. I said, because the budget can't handle that. Oh, so that's what it is. Yeah, it's pretty simple. You know, you always see that, that, that four percent is, is, is kind of the, the magic number because that's what the budget can bear. And so, so let me ask this question right here. So what we're looking at right here is, in, in option one, fifty-eight million, correct? Then we're going for a pay increase. Is that the percent? Is that the, the, the inflation that we're talking about?
Yes.
Then we have an adjusted minimum of half a million. And then we have a strategic, it's a one point eight. Explain that strategic adjustment.
So you have a current structure, so just as the city manager talked about, so you have a structure A, B, and C.
Yeah.
And employees are placed in that structure at certain distances from the midpoint. What we suggested in a preliminary costing, we can change that, is saying if we make this market, market aware, we're structured market aware. So we moved it to the mid, the midpoint. So your midpoint would match the market. We kept people where they are and shifted it with that. That's strategic alignment in this case.
Okay.
You could have done other things like time and place or other kind of data we kind of feel for, or performance ratings.
Yes.
It's also a possibility. So this, as a preliminary costing, that's just an easy way for us to say, hey, here's what it could cost during this option. This is the easiest way for all of us to have this discussion.
So why does it jump to almost double in the option two?
Because at that point.
And also the increase in, I'm sorry, and also the increase in employees in each and every one category on the count.
Okay, so if you look, if you take the structure, like my two hands are the structure. Option one, you're moving into the fiftieth percentile.
Okay.
You're eleven percent off, as we saw before. So that's a small judgment here. So it's just a small. We're going to seventy-fifth percentile, that was like twenty-eight, twenty-one percent.
Twenty-one percent.
So that much of shit. So people here that are below the minimum of this left hand here, as you see, that increased, right? That went from two fifteen because we moved the structure so much. And then things like your pay increase is, is about the number should be about the same. And then what happens is that strategic alignment, because you had such a big shift and we're keeping people whole within that structure, right? So they were five percent above the minimum, we moved them along with that structure.
So I guess my question here is, is that if it's true that we have a starting pay in our street department at fifteen and the temporary workers are brought in through a third party start at seventeen? If we, if we opt up one or two, are we moving that in op, in option one, are we moving that, that, that entry position from fifteen to seventeen in option one? Are we moving in option two, that entry level from fifteen to twenty? That's what people will be able to recognize. That's what the employees will be able to see.
Right.
And that's what we want to be able to.
Those answers will come when we actually create a structure, we're going to streamline that in. Because I really want to get the city manager and vet out the business of. Because I really want to get the city manager to vet out the business of somebody, if somebody, a ditch digger, is hired, that one person shouldn't have to go all the way up to the city manager to get a final. If we give a nice clear structure with guidance.
Yeah.
Then the city manager can say, hey, here's, here's my guard rail like on a bowling alley. If I've got a little bit off, I will go to you and say, okay, maybe. And in an extreme situation, then you go to the city manager.
What we're trying to achieve here, that's one of my most real big concerns, is that we want to address the animal control. We made a move by separating and divorcing animal control with police department because of the stringent, I guess, to be able to hire and to go through the background. I think it'll take it up to a year. But since we've done that, we're still at two. So, now it's a benefits pay, starting pay. Then the other one is the street department. When we get into the Blackwater and Bob Derrington, nobody's lining up to go out there at a career, career date and say, hey, my dream is to work at a sewer plant. Now, there are some school districts across the state that are working to try to create it as vocation. I don't know if that's here in ECISD. But having said that, we have two, two issues there is increasing the pay and being able to attract and to be able to make sure we have workers in the future. Pay alone is not going to be, is not going to solve that issue, the second question. So, you know, even though we make those adjustments and it's attractable, how do we address the second one? In recruitment and retention, it's always going to be a continuing, and every community is dealing with this. You know, it's like Larry the Cable Guy said, "I never saw the recruiter that was shooting chickens out of a can." You know, that's the job I would have gone for. This is kind of similar. And I know that there are companies out there that deal with this, but you know, this is gonna, this right here solves one issue. We still have an issue of recruitment or retention.
But you know, the council, you guys have been so advanced, we've already addressed a big piece of it, which is the benefits, right? Because when we think about this philosophy, we're talking about a total rewards.
One block at a time, yeah. And we get that January one.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you guys done excellent work with the fire and police, that shift that you've done in the last year, that's hard work and you can see.
Can you repeat that, please?
We've done excellent work with the fire and police section of, you know, the uniformed officers and everything.
And that's half of your population. Now, you can address, you can say option one and then you can have strategic shifts in other jobs. If those three or four positions or like your border department are really high, you can put them at the center. It doesn't mean you have to go uniformly across. You can make strategic movements.
We just had some of those shifts. Didn't we just have some shifts from a court enforcement to the marshal's office? That was two, right?
Right.
And so we'll be dealing with that here in a little while. So, yeah, so I know it's working. Thing is, is that when we're looking at cost, I know that we want to be able to put in some situations where we really make an impact. The initial investment's one, but then in the continuation in the future is another. You know, hoping that sales continue to increase, sales tax continue to increase, our fee adjustments are adjusted. We have to resolve the inflow through our permitting. That's another, another obstacle that we need to get to.
And we absolutely have time. This project doesn't end until March thirty-first. And so what we're hoping for today is a consensus on an option and we can continue moving forward. And then those numbers will be more clear as we get closer to the end.
Good.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry to waste my time. But can we, could we do something like, like say, let's move, try to move towards the median, immediately working towards, and the ultimate goal is, is as we do that, what the mayor said, if water treatment plant, we're not having any luck doing it, working towards the median, to move that to seventy-five percent to recruit. As he would say, that's just pans, one thing, recruiting's another. So, is that a strategy that we could incorporate?
There's, there's no reason why Cat and I have jobs because I have, I have these meetings every day with groups to say, hey, I can't hire a water treatment person, I just can't do it. And at this, at these numbers, and we shift them as we go on, which, you know, your anecdotal data is also real data. You say, I can't hire somebody at fifteen dollars an hour, but I can at seventeen. Then you take that information in and then obviously we look at affordability and stuff like that here and we see where we can move that and we put that in.
So, real quick question. You need to know if you need to move forward with option one or option two, walking out of here today.
Correct. And we need to know the philosophy that you like to establish. Same like your building codes, you need to know the philosophy is your foundation. Saying if you want to be at the median of the market and then from there, obviously you can adjust as we go on. But it's a good starting place for you to vet in HR and finance and say, hey, this will be the budget. This is where we go to and make those decisions.
So, the question was if we can make any adjustments today moving forward? Is that what the question was?
I think, I think what he was sharing is that if we, if they made a decision, correct me if I'm wrong, they made a decision of option one today, but then we got into it and we found that animal control really needed to be at the seventy-five percentile, how we make those adjustments.
Well, we've done that with the first responders, so it can be done.
Well, can we have an option like for the first year, we want to go up to the median? Then within five years, reach the seventy-fifth percent?
Same thing.
Yep, a phased approach to get you to that more competitive market position as the budget allows, that's what you would do.
Yeah, and there also is some discussions to be had on a, like an individual fund basis. This data here is aggregate, all of the positions in the city, but you know, all of those fall within different funds, different budgets, different fund balances. So, that's why we, today, we just want to know how you're feeling as far as median or seventy-fifth percentile so that we can delve into some of those conversations moving forward. And there are also a significant number of positions you saw who are even, as of today, very much below the twenty-fifth percentile. So, that's another thing to consider as we're discussing how we want to move forward from today.
So, Teddy, my last question is, and we'll get off of this, but at the, at the median at the three million and four, if we work towards that in the next twelve months, let's say, can we, are we going to be able to afford it? I guess is my question.
Our fund, our fund balances are healthy.
I know they are.
So, yes, we can afford it. What we want to make sure is that we can afford it long term.
That's all our questions. That's all our questions.
It's about building a sustainable structure.
That's the best argument for going into a stepped or phased in because I'm sure everyone on this dais remembers a year that wasn't good.
Yeah.
Probably more than one. The three, four also is for a year, correct?
That's going to be your increase to payroll.
For a year.
For, yes, but once you increase that number, it's always going to be that number.
Right. No, but that's for a year. And what I was going to get at is for this year, you're going to look at probably approximately back of the napkin type thing, half that.
Yeah.
Because, because of the cost of living increase.
No, because we're, it's gonna, we're gonna be into months before. Yes.
Do we have a consensus?
I mean, I want option two, but the, but the thing is, we have to.
Well, we want option two, we'll take it.
We all would like option two, but realistically.
Platinum plan, but we're on a, on a bronze budget.
If we didn't have water, streets, sewer, I would go to option two, but we have to go option one. He's into it.
Can we do, do we do option one for the first year and then phased into?
Revisit it?
Well, I think we all be more comfortable once we go through this phase to be able to see those numbers. And then, and then the option one gives the options if we need to go into option two in a particular area. Whether that be sewer, street, solid waste. I mean, it, it'd give us a little more, we'll go a little, because the thing is, is that we go to option two and we start decreasing and we get into this scenario.
We'll be back again. Yeah. I think that's a great point. So, is that something you all can help us work through?
Your philosophy is to be the median of the market and often adjust for a job to go off. Two years from now, you just say, yeah, I can come back and then we just say, sure.
Because that's one thing that's also important to note. This is a living thing. You know, you don't set the structure today and this isn't going to last long time. I mean, it's recommended every year that you address, adjust your structure with the trends for your area and your market and all of that. And then every three to five years, you do a full-scale compensation study. That's just to make sure, you know, that you're keeping pace with the trends in your area. And then it also helps you identify if there have been market shifts on any particular job. So, if something that maybe commands a higher market position today may not in five years and vice versa. And then it also helps you account for emerging markets. So, everything is database, not just, you know, picking out what they said they had to have.
I want to use a analogy that people, that people out in the real world can understand. And that's basically is what a running back in NFL is worth today and the utility of that position is not what it was fifteen, twenty years ago.
Exactly.
Okay. And so, and that's what we want to be able to have, those options to be able to look at where we can tweak it up and, up and, and what rate and how high. And so.
So, consensus was maybe was option one?
Yes. Option one with flexibility.
And work towards two over time, is the way I would put it.
Yeah, that's good.
And the other thing that will come out of it too is that we're going to be working with Gallagher, they don't know this yet, but really helping us to define our peers, who we really want to be compared to. So, we have a lot of work to do around that as well.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Well, we're going to go into item nine, discuss the possibility of moving to the actual determined contribution method of the City of Odessa Fire Rescue Retirement Fund. Ms. Manda?
Hi, yes. So, I all gave you a pretty lengthy presentation a couple of weeks ago, but you did want to hear from the pension board. And so we have Chief Marks here from OFR and he's the vice chair of our fire pension. He's very knowledgeable in the pension matters. He was instrumental in helping turn the wave for the pension several years ago. Ms. Swanner was also very instrumental in that as she was on the board as well. So, I brought him. I didn't bring him, but he's here to speak to you about what this, how this could impact Odessa Fire Rescue.
Okay. You got the floor, sir.
All right. So, I was really under the impression that I might be answering questions. I know y'all had questions last time while we were at the conference. So, we can start there if you'd like and, and see where that goes unless you want me to start somewhere in particular.
Counsel for a set of time, do you want to go ahead and start those questions? Do you remember the presentation two weeks ago?
So, my main question then was on that chart, if I can remember. There's a certain part where we reached the, I guess, the magic threshold with the current system that we're in right now quicker than we did with the actuarial. So, I was wondering, what's the benefit of going to the actuary?
Well, there's, there's several benefits. Right now, the city pays twenty-eight percent of our paychecks towards the pension, which is a great number. And it's been that way for, I guess, two years this month. It was October of twenty-two when that started. So, moving to an ADC, it does a couple of things. The biggest thing that it does, at least for the pension board, for the city as the sponsor, is it puts guardrails up.
It keeps?
Guardrails. It puts guardrails in the plan to help keep us from getting into the condition that we were in prior to the twenty-seventeen plan change. The way Telfer plans work in the state of Texas is it's a fixed rate contribution rate, both from the city and from the member. So, you agree at twenty-eight, we agree at sixteen, we have a vote of our membership, you have a vote of council, and we do that for a year, for two years, five years, ten years, whatever that is, until the board hears from their actuary and says, okay, well, you know, there's been a few years where we could have done better here or we did better here. So, we need to go back to the city and say, well, city, let's, let's change your fixed rate to twenty-nine or twenty-seven or twenty-six, whatever that is. And there's conversations in those same timeframes where the city says, well, let's walk the, the members' contribution down from sixteen to fifteen to fourteen or whatever. All of that is very reactive and it takes action from the council. It takes action from our membership to change our plan document to match that. What an ADC does is it just makes the arrangement so that we have a different fixed goal. Instead of moving forward with fixed contribution rates on both sides, we move forward with a fixed payoff window, amortization period, twenty years. That's what we would want to move to in this ADC. So, now, on an annual basis, what would happen is our actuary comes in and says, okay, instead of taking the twenty-eight from the city and the sixteen from the members and then seeing how your assumptions played out this year, how many retirements did you have versus what we assumed? How many deaths did you have versus what we assumed? How did your investments do versus what we assumed? And then now the number comes out, the one moving piece in there is your amortization period. The reason that is difficult to work with is that due to legislative changes that were made in twenty-fifteen that were put into effect in sixteen, that we had our plan change in twenty-seventeen, to have the amortization period being the one thing that moves is it makes you potentially subject to some of the new laws that are out there, which is why we had to do our big plan change in twenty-seventeen, which was a great thing. We needed it. It was a good thing to happen. But with the law that's going into effect September first of twenty, is it this year? Twenty-five. That goes into effect next year, September first of twenty-twenty-five. What those new standards are is, okay, if your amortization period jumps above thirty, ours is currently twenty-two point seven. It's great. We used to be in infinity. We were going to run out of money. Now, we're at twenty-two point seven, you know, this seven years later and we're doing great, but two thousand eight's happened, right? Two thousand eleven's happened. So, then what happens with the amortization rate being the one moving piece here is we have a bad year in the market and now we jump above thirty. So, that's one trigger. The next thing they look at is your funded ratio. How funded is your plan? If it's below sixty-five percent funded, which we are, we're approaching forty, they say, okay, it's time to do a funding soundness restoration plan, which is what we did in twenty-sixteen that went into effect one, one-seventeen. So, then we come back to council after meeting with city management and, and our membership and we try to come up with a plan. Do we make benefit changes? Do we pay more as members? Do we pay more as a city? How do we solve this problem? And then we go back and forth with the pension review board at the Capitol and all of this work went into here's our plan. So, what the caveat is to that new law is if you are already under an ADC through your sponsor, then you're good. There's no, obviously your amortization period no longer jumps above thirty because we have the set window of twenty. And the thing that moves in that calculation now is the city's contribution rate, which is what Kaylee showed you last time, I believe, in the modeling that we had. So, the caveat to that law is if you're under an ADC model with your sponsor, we're, we're good. Because that is an arrangement we have come up with, with our sponsor, to help us get to a healthier funded position. Now, to speak to, why is that better? Well, the guardrails is the big thing for us because prior to twenty-sixteen, our plan was in bad shape. And since then, we've taken great action as a board. Unfortunately, most of what y'all see is the plan change and the contribution increases on both of the members and the, and the city. But on the board side, we terminated all of our professionals, got rid of every one of them. Since then, we have cut our fees by a third. We have gone from the ninety-fifth percentile in the Wilshire universe, which monitors all the public pension plans in the nation. We were in the ninety-fifth percentile years ago. We now stay below the twentieth percentile and as low or high as the fifth percentile in our investment returns in Odessa, Texas compared to the rest of the country. We have put in place board policies, which are more guardrails. We took the state's mandated CE hours that they make us get every year, two hours is what the state says we should get. We made our own policy, we require thirty. We require thirty hours of all of our firefighters and our administrator and fifteen hours of our city appointees and our two taxpayer representatives. We have an attendance policy that we're looking at implementing this meeting so that if there ever is a problem with attendance, which we don't have.
We have an issue with our member with the city council?
We do not. We actually rarely have anybody miss meetings, but we're just trying to build these guardrails with the ADC being the last box to check to not only keep our plan healthier and to make sure that if any day comes in the future where it's not the same seven people sitting on our board, that it would take great action or great stupidity to undo everything that we've done. So, this is kind of that last box on making it work. So, this is kind of that last box on making it work for us. Now, being off of the Pension Review Board's list, of course, we haven't been on the naughty list in years now, we're doing great. They actually use us as the poster child for pension reform and how you do it. But the possibility exists with that new law coming September first of twenty-twenty-five. But if we can get the ADC agreement done, we become one of its either three or four Telfer funds in the state that have already moved that direction. But we would be the first that did it without having to do a pension obligation bond, because of the great work that was done in twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen, when we needed twenty percent of pay and the firefighters came up with it, and asked the city for four. So, this is just another thing that the City of Odessa and the Odessa Firefighters Relief and Retirement Fund can do to set the trend before it becomes the law.
So, how's the membership feel about this?
Well, so the way it would work is if y'all agree to this, we would take it to the membership and have to have a plan, or a membership vote to get the plan document changed. That would take education on our parts to have meetings with our members, and we actually do annual meetings with them. We've been waiting to have those annual meetings until this discussion was at a place to where we knew what direction it was going. The members won't, they won't, they won't notice anything different. They're still going to pay their contribution rate, their benefits don't change, you know, and it's still the city paying what the city is, is due to pay. So, I don't foresee there really being any questions or concerns from a membership point of view.
Ben, that was another question, kind of reminding me of, once we reach that sixty-fifth percentile, is there an opportunity for the, the firefighters to go down, their percentage to go down?
The, what they pay. Yes, sir, that, that's actually something that we have, obviously, I mean, you, you want that as a firefighter, right? When we're sitting at that table, our fiduciary responsibility is to the fund first, so we try not to think as a firefighter when we're sitting there. But when these actions are taken, and then you take a step back and see who you're representing, obviously, it affects the firefighters, how much money is coming out of their paycheck. And as a refresher, our, our normal cost, which is what it costs for me to earn a year of benefit in retirement, our most recent normal cost from our last actuarial evaluation was just over sixteen percent, like sixteen point one percent. Well, as a member in the fund, I'm paying sixteen percent, so I'm essentially funding my own benefit. So, the conversation has been there on our board for the last several years, because we were at eighteen, overpaying, right? But we were trying to do our part to fill that hole that we inherited. So, the city, between management and council at the time, walked us down from eighteen to sixteen, when they went from twenty to twenty-six. So, they increased four, plus two, walked us down two, so a net increase of the four. So, it, it, it helped at the time. These are conversations that we've had on the board with Kaylee as the, the finance representative on the board, and even in the meetings we've had with Mr. Beckmeyer before presenting to y'all. That is something that I know is important to Mr. Beckmeyer and Kaylee, and to our board, in trying to walk down the firefighters a little bit, so that they are getting that benefit for working for the city.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
I think it only makes sense to have the actuarial, I mean, it kind of basically grandfather's you in for many crazy changes going down the road. And that's what broke everybody's pension plans before, is they, I can't remember what year, what, two thousand and eight, or what, they changed FASB, FASB one oh three, which is what?
And GASB sixty-seven and sixty-eight is really where, when those changes happened in thirteen or fourteen, that's what really brought the city to the table at that time, from our point of view.
Yeah, it started back in the mid.
Right, because the number started being a, a real number at that point, so.
Because nobody's funding the real number.
Right. But I can say, from being on the board, my first year on the board was, it started at the end of thirteen, and then all of this happened in fifteen. So, I can say, in working with the city for the last ten years on the board, that the City of Odessa has set the bar high for the other sponsors out there. I mean, whether it's ten miles to our east, or even further away, there are people that call and ask us, how have you done what you've done in Odessa? And we're quick to give the credit to our members and the city council and city manager, and the city management, because we, the board can't do anything. We come up with some ideas, but we have to, we have to rely on our professionals, and then we have to rely on the people that, that make the decisions locally.
So, John, where do we go from, from, from this standpoint?
So, we just need a consensus to move forward.
And it's on tonight.
It's going to be on tonight.
Yeah.
It's going to be on tonight.
It has to be put in place at ordinance.
Okay. So, counsel, I guess we'll have that discussion in about less than an hour.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Okay. And I think someone, you may have asked last time, Mr. Thompson, about our portfolio.
Yeah.
And just to, right, I know you mentioned sixty, forty, that, that, we really moved away from that in the last seven or eight years at the advice of our investment consultant, who has taken us from the bottom to the top. And just for your information, we are currently at sixty percent equities, we're at around twelve percent fixed income, and then we have twenty percent real estate, and then we have almost five percent in cash that we pay our benefits from. And, and then we have a little bit left in private credit, I believe. But for the last two years, ever since the city went to twenty-eight percent, we have been cash flow positive for the first time in thirty years. So, what that's allowed us to do as a board is get away from having to sell things to pay things. So, that's why we have three million dollars sitting in cash, so that we can pay the benefits as the contributions come in. And now we're able, that opened up some asset classes to us that have really paid off.
Yeah, three million dollars at five percent even. It does, does wonder, doesn't it?
Anything else for me?
No, I don't have anything else. Counsel, you have?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And I'd also be remiss if I didn't also shout out Eric Brown. There you are, I was like, I heard him say your name. Another worthy member of Odessa Fire Rescue, and he is our board chair. So, it's been a pleasure to work with these gentlemen on the board. I'm sure Councilman Swanner would echo that sentiment. Just truly a great group of people who want to help move this in a positive direction.
And they truly did. In Austin, the other day, in front of the Pension Review Board, they couldn't say enough good about the board here in Odessa, and the way that the city and the fire depart, the fire department has worked together to get out of this situation and to have one of the models.
Yeah, they did.
It's really unlike somebody else ten miles to the east.
Yeah, the good news, we didn't have to borrow money, like ten miles to the east.
Why do you say that?
You kind of got it. You kind of have to have an agreement to even do the borrowing.
Right.
I'm going to stop there.
Any other questions for me?
You've done great. No, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on to item ten, update on the pre-development agreement for the sports complex. Mr. Beckmeyer?
It's been so long, I forgot what I was going to talk about. No, this is pre-development agreement between us and Sports Med. Sports Med, if you'll remember from way back there, is the, basically the developer for the sports complex. They work for Centurion. And all this is, this doesn't cost us any money unless, for fault of our own, we cause the deal to break. And it's basically a breakage, and it's part of the Centurion agreement, basically. It's more, I wanted you all aware of it, would like consensus to move forward on it. What they initially came to us with was if anybody in the world caused this deal to break, then we had to pay, pay all their breakage fees. Well, first off, they had the foundation in there. Foundation has nothing to do with the construction of this thing. We got them to take all that out. We went with a clause that basically said, if it's our fault, we'll pay, because we should. If it's our fault, that's decent business. They didn't like that to begin with, they sent it back. We came up with the same phrase, basically said in a nicer way, that still protects us. It's if our fault, if it's our fault. In the first paragraph on page two of this agreement, any other reason, number four, any other reason that can be directly attributable to the owner? And then at the very last line in that, the owner shall not be responsible for any reimbursement, developer reimbursable cost not attributable to or as a result of actions taken by the owner. So, what we've done is tried to say, look, we'll pay our part. If, if we cause a problem, we'll pay our part. But if we don't cause a problem, if Centurion, if, who, who knows, causes a problem, that's not our responsibility to pay for somebody else. And that's what this is.
This is the, this is probably the last hurdle that we, we needed to get past.
Goodness, I hope so. We have three meetings over the next week, one with Centurion and Jason, one with Mr. Bell, and one with.
Kent Quick.
Kent Quick. And so, we're starting to move into the fast part of it. This, this part of the agreement basically took a week to get done, so it's not too, hadn't been too bad. But the MOU is signed, it's in place, Centurion's getting their financing together. That's a word that we got last week that followed back up with, with Mr. Thompson on. Kent Quick is ready to start making strides, and so we're meeting with them. This, and initially, I pushed back on this, because it was, I wasn't paying for somebody else's problem. I didn't think you all should pay for someone else's problem. But at this point, the city is protected, and we pay for our own problems.
Yeah, I think we're all concerned that, that stipulation, they just get up and walk and take the ball with them, and we still wind up paying.
It was stuff that's out of our control. We were going to pay for it.
Counselor, are you good with this?
I'm good with this. And I believe a few months ago, y'all already given John authority to execute this. He just want to bring it back, let y'all know what's going on.
Yeah. Okay.
Fine.
All right. Next two items are yours. Item eleven, discuss the, giving the authority to the city manager to write a letter to Ector County agreeing for annexation of twelve point eight-three acre tract of land situated in section five, block forty-one, township two, south, eight seventy. Mr. Beckmeyer?
This is the same thing I've been doing for the last few council meetings, or work sessions, saying, can I send a letter of intent to, to the county, so that we can annex this property?
Sounds good. We're going to move on to item twelve?
I'm sure I've already got the letter written, and I haven't even seen it.
Yeah. And discuss authority of the city manager to write a letter to Ector County agreeing in the annexation of eleven point four-two-five acre tract situated in section twenty-seven and twenty-eight, block forty-two, township one, south, Texas Pacific Road. John?
I think ditto is the word here.
Yeah.
Counsel, we have consensus on both eleven and twelve?
Yes.
Yes. So, we'll go, move on to item thirteen, be no more business before the city council's work session, I have motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselman Swanner, second by Councilman Vasquez, all those in favor indicating my motion abat.
Aye.
All those, motion against, same sign. Motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned.